Okay. I'm gonna start. And I'm sure he'll get it. Okay, welcome everyone to the July 7th meeting of the Bristol Planning Commission. July 7th of 2020. And let's see, first on the agenda, any adjustments? I, or additions, removals, I have one adjustment where it says under new business that. I don't think that, I think we're just gonna focus on the Unified Development Regulations tonight and see how that goes. And try, and then just work on the. Move to the plan next meeting, so. I assume everyone got my email I sent out last week, kind of explaining the timeline and. Well, why don't we just first, let's go to the minutes first, do we have, we need to review and approve the minutes of 616. So does anyone have any comments? Or questions on those? I didn't send them out, but Bill did. Does someone wanna maybe text Tom, just see if he's having trouble, actually, or? Email him, I guess I could do that. Any, anything on the minutes? No, so does someone wanna make a motion?
Make the motion that the minutes be approved.
Okay, second? And you're taking minutes, right, Bill? Okay.
Was that minutes for 616?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. I'm gonna give Tom a quick email, okay?
You can start with chat.
Oh, yeah. I'm really sick of this. Sorry, chat. Well, someone else could do that, too, Tom.
I'm sending in something now.
Okay.
Kevin, are you on your porch?
I am.
It looks great.
It's gonna, it is gonna be great until the bugs come out, so.
Yeah, that's true.
He's got a different computer, because it usually says Tom Wallace, I think, or Claire, it says Wallace user. Okay. So. Okay, the minutes are approved. And administrative matters, approval process and timeline, so. I sent. Everyone out the timelines. And, well, does anyone have any questions about that, I'm not gonna restate what I said in the, in the email. You know, we are, we have what we have and. So the thinking was that we need, you know, we can get the, some of the Unified Development regs. Done in, on the ballot for November, that's great. And, but we have to, you know, we kinda, we have to do it. And, but I want, you know, we all have to be in agree, you know, agreement and. And then we'll just, you know, push to get the plan, so. There's, you know, there's just a lot of, with the, the, the regs have, the development regs have a shorter period of time you need for. A warning and approval and based on the statutes and the. The plan is just longer. So. That's just what it is, and I should have been more up on that, and I wasn't. But it is a group, it's not just me. So any comments on that?
I've got a question, the timeline for the plan. Looks like it was set up to go to a November. Vote, is that?
The plan?
Not gonna do that, right?
The plan is set up, the timeline I sent you for the plan would be for town meeting day.
Be when?
Town meeting day.
That's my understanding, but that's not the way I read it, so that's maybe not accurate, then.
Well, I sent you two timelines. Can any, anyone have?
Plan has the first public hearing of the Select Board and, and end of October, and then end of November is the second public hearing for the. Select Board on that, so that puts it in line with getting ready for February. For town meeting day, rather.
Basically. The last public hearing, the second Select Board public hearing would be the 23rd of November.
So, one question got posed to me yesterday morning. Was by one of the planning, I mean Conservation Commission members. And they were wondering if we were gonna send the plan out to them, Energy Committee, any of the other boards or commissions in town. And I was like, oh, I believed them, and I looked at the timeline and I didn't see any. Back to them to do that with the plan.
Well, it's not written on there, but we can do it the same time we send it to the Select Board or same time we, after we. Notice the first hearing. I mean, after, we can send it before the, our first hearing, the Planning Commission's first hearing. I mean, we need, after we approve or decide to move the plan forward, we have to send it to all the abutting towns. And we can just send it, you can share it with other. Other boards at that time, that's. Does that, does that answer?
I'm not sure if you wanted to send it out before that, so if there were. Let's say the Conservation Commission recommended, you wanted to incorporate before you warned your final hearing, you might wanna do that. Or send it out to the other town.
Well. That would just push it back more, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a fine, I mean, it has three public hearings, we can make changes. There are, there's ability to make some changes, and actually, the cons, people on, a couple of members on the Conservation Commission have been. Have seen the plan already, the Energy Commission has seen some of the plan. I, let's start with them.
I gave one of the Conservation Commission members, the few sections that he was interested in yesterday, and he saw them for the first time.
Well, have him get in touch with somebody, you know, I, I'm, I don't know, I don't know how to answer your question.
What's our deadline for changes, what's the? Final date we can make changes to this before it needs to be basically sealed and ready to be voted on, is it before it goes to the Select Board?
Well, the Select, but the Select Board can make changes.
They can, but I don't think we can be changing it while they're having their public hearings and reviewing it.
No, we can't do it during the 15 days prior to their, their meeting. But. I'm, you know, the timeline's pretty complicated, I actually posted, posted this out for the. Well, that's the plan, so, I, I think I'd really like to focus on the bylaws tonight, so. And then maybe we can, I can send everybody out the state statutes on, you know, how it outlines a plan approval. I will check in on other commissions, but we. We're not there yet with the plan, so we can share any of that information with other members now, I mean. Now's the time.
I guess the thing, the thing I'm scratching my head about is we have to, the Select Board has to have their second public he, conduct their second public hearing in November. To put it on the ballot for March?
There's, there's.
A little time. Because they may, we may have to come back, we had a meeting. With Valerie and Chris and Adam Lugi and, and Michelle Purley from the Select Board to make sure that this would work with those. Our two boards, and she supported and agreed to this timeline for the plan. Um, you know. So that.
Because if you, if you get much later into it with the Select Board, they're. Once you hit November, they're done.
Yeah, so that, if we miss that, then we're into Christmas, and then we're into the end of January, and then it's too, actually, too late. So, you know, we may be able to, if something happens during the first Select Board hearing that. Makes it, I don't know if it comes back to us, or we have to change, I don't know how the, the regs worked last time, I know it did have to come back, didn't it, Chris? We had to select, we had to take something out with the zoning regs. So then, but that was regs, so it's less of a time, a warning time, so it just, it's still tight, though, because the periods of time for the. To warn for the plan are 30 days, as opposed to. With the reg, regs, it's 15 for the Planning Commission and then 30 for the Select Board, or maybe 15, but anyways, it's. I spent a lot of time on this timeline and went over it several times, and I'm pretty confident that it's correct, so, I mean, it might be off like a teeny bit, but it's. A lot of people reviewed it and we had a lot of discussions about it, so. I feel pretty confident, I feel very confident that it is correct. I don't have that one in front of me right, well, I can bring it up, but. How about if we, how about if we move forward, if everyone's all right with this, on the regs and go through. Questions on that and see where we get, and then we can possibly get that out of the way and move forward, and then we can. Figure out the details of the plan. Is that? All right with everybody? Okay.
Tom is trying to sign on with his phone now.
Yeah.
You didn't answer my chat.
No. Well, he's on, he's on mute. He hasn't called me or texted me. Okay, so. Did everybody get? Adam put a memo together, did everybody get that I just got today? Did everybody get that and I sent it out? Basically, it summarizes the changes that were made in the Unified Development Rights. And. Which is, this is required by statutes as well to. Submit with the document. When you move it forward through the hearing or. Adopt it.
So Katie, did you want us to go through the, to the memorandum that you sent? The memorandum that you sent out? Or the actual rewrite?
Well, I just wanted to make sure if everyone got it, yeah, did everybody get it, okay. I'm just like, not, I feel like you can't hear me or something, you just, it's just quiet. And, so that's good. Wanna know if there's any, you know, if everyone saw the green highlighted items and do people have concerns? Or, you know, what are the concerns, do you wanna go through those, I mean, I don't really have, basically, I wanna find out, are there issues here that we need to discuss, are there things that we need to change? We've got, we went through the bulk of it, and people, you know, the board seemed to be happy with it, with the exception of some, you know. There were, you know, we had discussions about. Possibly looking at housing issues, but we, that's not. That wasn't in. The scope of work right now, I, you know, I, we can always come back and look at very specific items, you know, maybe with a consultant, maybe not. Or just work on it, I mean, that's what, that's what the Planning Commission does, especially if we do go ahead and have a design. Review board that reviews projects and the Planning Commission is just. Specifically looking, writing plans and zoning, so. I guess I wanna hear from board, because I am just one member of the board, how you wanna proceed, anyone have any suggestions? Or questions?
Well, the, the memo says we approved the plan on July 7th, so.
Well, this is.
The, the. We completed our work revising the UDR, so.
Okay, this is.
Decide if we haven't, that completed the work.
No, 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 we haven't, okay, this is a draft memo. This isn't going anywhere, I guess it should have said draft on it, that's.
Well. I, I would say, Jeff, that there's been modifications past our approval, so. There probably is, it is probably right to have a little bit of discussion about what's been changed.
Well, as I said in my let email. Our, I took our discussions from May 19th. And I made some suggestions. And I think I pretty much outlined them, I sent them to you, Chris, they're in green in the document. And that's what I was hoping, and they were based on Chris's suggestions at, that we talked generally about.
But we never decided anything.
We didn't decide.
To the U, this plan.
That's why, I, I'm not trying to like sneak anything by, I'm trying to just, we can take them out if you want, okay, they're in there as edits. To review or look at, it's not elaborate, if we don't wanna do it, we don't do it.
I'm not cut to the chase, I don't have a lot of problems, I've got just a couple notes and they're just, just tactical things. That. I think we need to talk about, but it shouldn't take more than 10 minutes, personally.
What pages are you, are you referring to, Kevin?
Well, for starters, I see all sorts of need for a spell check through the table of contents, which I'm sure, I'm hoping, assuming somebody will do, but. On page, so on page. 63.
Hang on.
Six, section 604 campgrounds.
Hang on a minute, let's, let's, give us a chance to get there.
Okay.
Uh, what section is that?
604, item 5.
604?
Yes.
Okay.
So my recollection is that number, item 5, had you had to have a water source within 100 feet. And we agree that you just needed to have access to one. But if I read this thing, it can be construed that you need to approve water supply at each campsite, which I don't recall being our intent.
I agree with you, I thought it was 100 feet also.
No, it was 100 feet, we took that out, and my recollection was, you just need to have access, and. And then this here, as it reads, as 5 is written in this draft. It, in my opinion, it can be construed that you need a water supply at each campsite, which I don't recall being our intent, I think it was just to have access to.
Right.
Kevin, I think if you had the word, shall have, the word access. To a water supply, you might be, that might resolve your concern.
I think that's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm raising.
So shall have access to a water supply?
Yeah.
Okay.
If everybody's in agreement, so that was my recollection of what we had decided.
So are you gonna change that, Rob? You changed it, good.
Yes, I will try to keep up with these changes as we go through and send the document off to somebody.
Thank you, you can send it to me and Bill.
So then, the other thing is on page 69, section 610.
Okay.
Uh, paragraph 5, so if you go down a little bit further. Paragraph 5, item 1. Definitions contained in Article 11. So another, again, one of my pet peeves is we got an acronym in there without defining it, even though it is vaguely defined in the definitions.
Jim.
So our RAP is. What is it, Rural Agricultural Practices or something or other?
Acquired agricultural practices.
Let's just write it out.
Can you highlight that, Rob, I'm kinda lost here.
He is. Just highlighting it.
Oh, okay. Got it.
I mean, we should, we should write it out and define the acronym.
All right, so what should that be?
Rural Ag, okay.
Acquired agricultural practices.
And then you can, you can just, you know, you can put the acronym in parentheses after it if you want.
Yeah. I've got that.
Well, Kevin, you don't wanna define that right there, because it's actually defined lower.
It's defined in the definitions and, but the acronym's not clear, so.
Okay.
Rather than chase down what the acronym is, it's just a convenience to have it there.
Okay.
That's, that's the extent of my comments.
Any other sections we wanted to, to take a look at? Oh, there's Tom, hi, Tom.
I'm tardy, sorry about that.
Okay. So I don't know, have you heard us talking, Tom?
I did, had the audio, but couldn't get my pretty face on there.
Oh, good, I'm glad you're here.
Hey, I got a question, I got a question in between here. Read the memorandum there, that was interesting, I was curious who drafted that.
Okay, so can I just, I just need to make a point about that, that is a draft memorandum, that's a memorandum that. I, I. Send out, but it is, it's not going anywhere unless we obviously agree to this and it can be changed, so. I had asked Adam to summarize. The changes that, that were made, and, and as part of an adoption process, you need to put a memorandum together. I saw that he put the date on it, and it was an example, that's not gonna go anywhere unless, you know, you know, agreed upon and, and anything we change here. That will reflect it, so I, that was, I know confusing to people, I, I didn't actually realize, think about that, and I apologize. So, um, did I answer your question by saying that?
I think so, yes, you did, I was just curious, when you're, you had a meeting with Adam and, and Val and so on, everybody was in agreement there?
We were in agreement to move forward as best we can, the timeline was just longer than I had anticipated and. It's what it is.
I see Chris not in here, so we agreed.
Yeah, and, and I made sure that I actually had Valerie, not Valerie, Michelle Purley, who, I didn't realize, she's a liaison for the Planning Commission, so. Ever since I've been in the Planning Commission, I've always felt like we need to have a little more conversation between the two boards, but. That was a good start, so. Because I think it makes things run more smoothly, anyways. So what we're doing is, you know, if we can come to agreement tonight, that would be fabulous, if we can't, we can't, so that's what we're, that's our mission tonight. So we're in the process of commenting on any of the changes in the, in the. The proposed rights. And the motion tonight can also be a. An emotion to move it towards the Planning Commission public hearing. So, and then after that hearing, we can adopt it. And that is what actually Adam advised me on. I don't know if everyone agrees with that, but that is. That's what he said, so that we don't. You know, there's things like, obviously, things like, you know, non-sens, the changes, like, you know, any kind of grammar, any kind of stuff like that, we can change, but also other, you know, words, you know. Things that just aren't spelled out correctly, and not, I mean, figuratively, not spelled out correctly, but. Okay. Any more comments?
The section that Kevin was just asking about, says, these are definitions that are in Article 11.
10.
Says, mine says Article 11.
I think they're moved to 11.
Oh, really? Can you shoot that up, Rob?
What page?
Can you get that up?
65 at the bottom, that Kevin was just talking about it.
65?
Where he was talking about the RAP rules.
Right.
Says definitions contain an Article 11 of these regulations, but we don't have an Article 11.
I didn't think we had one.
Go up to Article 10, I think.
Right.
Do, do you see it, Rob, I don't?
Right there, it says under 1, definitions contain an Article 11 of these regulations.
Yeah.
We don't have an Article 11. Definitions are in Article 10.
Right.
And. RAP is not in there, so I'm confused.
So RAP is defined in the definitions underneath, it's, it's the trailing sentence of one of the definitions in the farm section?
Did a farmer farming?
And it's not, it's not very well defined what the acronym is, it just, you gotta like read it in the sentence.
Well, do we wanna put a definition of RAP in Article 10? I mean, it's kinda redundant, because we're, we're talking about it in A, B, and C, I think, if I can read it.
Well. I, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but it could be, I don't see a reason to take it out of the definition, but it could be better defined. What the acronym is, if that makes sense. Yeah, so underneath the farm definition. Yeah, so underneath the farm definition, the last sentence is where it's defined, but it's not, not very clear. But the gist point is that the numbering is wrong. I thought we had added a section, but I guess not.
Maybe we did, but it's not, it's not in here.
It's not in the table of contents either.
It's not in, yes, it's not there.
It looks like there's only, apart from the definition and that section we were just talking about, it looks like there may only be one other reference to the RAP rules, so it may not be a, that may not be a, a factor unless everybody feels we really need to restructure this definition to more clearly define it.
I think it's fairly well defined.
Yeah, it's okay. I, I wasn't having a problem with the definition. My only question was the numbering of the article.
Yeah, that, that's incorrect, so we should change that.
Okay.
I changed it there. I'll try to do a search and see if there's another one in there, any other article 11.
Going to the general question, I didn't have any problem with any of the things in green that you added, but they reflected what we discussed.
Anyone else? Bill Sayer, I see you there.
Yeah. I'm, I'm reading.
I sent it to you a long time ago.
I know you did. Run it a little bit behind.
I did, I did actually try to. I know, I know.
You did fine. I'm just running behind.
All right.
Yeah, first, I was at a commission back in May.
You, yeah, right.
Yeah, that's when I was in the hospital.
Right.
My impression though is here that most of it just had to do with agriculture. The definitions and districts, or is that a mistake on my part?
Say that again.
That most of the revisions were in the agriculture and farm section.
Well, there was the, the, um, uh, change of on farm, what's the term, on farm accessory business. And that's on regulation that has been passed. And, um, well, the big, in the, other than the subdivision, other, other than including development review board and, and then what that, how that affected the other regs, there were a few other things that got brought up, the campground, just some language there. There was something that Chris and I came across when we had the issue with, and I did notice that it is moved, the shed, for plan unit, for downtown designation overlay district having more oversight. And I'm trying to remember now the last set of things that.
We also added outdoor recreation to all zones, uh, and we included business yards in the RA5 district.
What's the definition of a business yard?
Are you asking?
Yes.
You're asking that question? Well, that was one of the business yard. We can go to that. Yeah, so there was, I'm remembering now, the business yard.
Here, I'll, I'll read it to you right now, Bill. A business yard is used primarily to store and maintain construction, landscaping, or similar heavy, heavy equipment, and other materials and facilities customarily required by a contractor building landscaping or construction-related trades or similar businesses, and where the majority of the business activity takes place off-site. They include associated office space and/or enclosed area for vehicle or equipment repair or maintenance. Not include regular or ongoing sale of equipment.
Okay. That sounds thorough and reasonable.
And two other issues, I don't know if you've heard them about, heard Chris say about the trails. So, um, allow, are allowing trails in all regions? Is that, no, I can't remember. But what, go ahead.
So the issue was, uh, trails were included in the outdoor recreation definition, and we did not allow them in most of the, in some of the village areas. So all the new, most of the new Bristol Trail Network that's been created was a huge zoning violation. So reviewing it and the better, and for the betterment, it makes more sense to allow those as conditional uses in the previously unallowed districts.
Recognizing reality, is that correct?
Was it that they were prohibited or just not mentioned?
They were prohibited.
Right, so the, the way we do it, Bill, as you know, it's not, it's, it's not listed as a use in the use, so by not being allowed listed, it is, it is prohibited. So yes, both.
Well, as you can imagine, that's, in my view, contrary to the entire history of Anglo-Saxon jurisprudence. Mentioned that's allowed is a normal rule. You, uh, you won't be surprised, that's how I feel. Second question would be, are we saying anything about whether the, the trail can be established without land?
I didn't hear the last thing you said, last.
Nor, normally, we like to think of cooperative relationship between trail users and the people who own the land.
Mm-hmm.
We get a little suspect when a trail is, is established as a public use or a public right with landowner consent. And this is a very important issue that has, that the state has attempted to deal with several times over the years. And a, a compromise that most people, trail users and trail providers can live with. To eliminate liability with the landowner if there's no, if there's no prohibition on establishment of a trail or any other public use of private land. But at the same time, no formal, leaving, leaving it up to the landowner and the trail user, whether there'd be any formal agreement. Also being fairly clear, that by establishing a trail does not create public right to that trail. Do you see what I mean?
But, but we're not even mentioning trails. It just says it allows outdoor recreation.
I thought you told me earlier you were mentioning trails, so take that out.
Trails are part of the definition for outdoor recreation, and that's where the problem began. So previously, village business, village mix, high-density residential in Bristol Pond area did not allow outdoor recreation as a, it was prohibited in those. So what we did would be adding outdoor recreation as a site plan review for those four zones. None of the other zones and none of the rest of the definite, no definition change occurred.
Okay, so if I, I'm understanding you correctly, trails are included in outdoor recre- recreation as a, in those four districts as site plan review.
I thought you said conditional before, but it's site plan?
I looked at it, I'm looking at it now. It's listed as site plan.
Oh, yeah, all right.
We're neutral and it's not our intent to establish any preemption of landowner rights by reference, direct or indirect, implicit or explicit to. Is that, is that fair?
I would agree with that statement, Bill.
Which, which section are we on, fellas, ladies?
We're looking at uses for outdoor recreation. So we're right now looking at the use table on page 16.
16?
Right, so this, we're referring to the issue of outdoor recreation not be allowed in certain zones and that may be trails out of compliance, in certain, the Bristol Trail Network trails out of compliance. So, the suggestion was made to have them, have all outdoor recreation require a site plan review in those districts.
And outdoor recreation has a definition, Bill.
Right, and trail is just one of those things. And and I know for these trails, they, they do, they go out and get easements. I mean, it is a cooperative with landowner. And I, I don't know the nature of the issue. I think they got easements, but then, I, I don't, I don't know. They all have easements, don't they, Chris?
Oh, I mean, the town owns a lot of it, um, and I don't know if there are agreements between, um, like with, I think, Lightup, across Lightup's property, and I think across his, um, Harper's property. They've run into some landowners that had told them absolutely no, and that's been, and that's, and they respected that and they moved on.
Right, right. That is my understanding, that it's cooperative.
Doesn't really deal with those issues. That's a separate set of issues, right?
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you an example where it wouldn't be a separate issue, but first, I wanna say there are some who have legal agreements at one end of the spectrum, and then it's Chris. Okay. Can you hear me now, Bill? Hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. We lost Bill Brown, or Bill Brown lost me. Everybody, okay?
Yeah.
So one end of the spectrum, you have, uh, legal agreements. At the other end is Chris, and you have an impasse and no, and no permission given. But then you have off trails on land where there is is a voluntary agreement without anything put in writing. Nothing in writing. And that's, uh, most of the trails, for example, on Hogback Mountain. And right in there. And, and Jeff, here's where, if, and all of you, it can become tricky. If you have a permit request for a trail system, and it comes to a hearing, you have a whole bunch of people saying we love the trail, and you might even have the landowner saying, we have no objections, as, as been the case with Hogback Mountain. That's a trail going up to the ledges as one, one of the trails there. And then there are minutes taken for the meeting and minutes are memorialized. Some smart lawyer could say, we have a, the planning commission and the force of law, a public right established in that trail. It's the example I'll give you to consider.
I, I, I don't, I don't see how that follows. We're not saying anything about trails here and who has a right to do what. We're just saying it's permitted to have a trail.
So there would, so what?
It doesn't require anyone, it doesn't require anyone to accept a trail.
So when you say there would be.
That would apply to these items, right?
If, if there's site plan review, that's, that's a hearing. It's not a, a, a decision by a public body. That's the only way I could see, uh, your. On the other hand, you do have a hearing and you do reach a conclusion. You have findings of fact and conclusions of law arguably have established a public right. A permit. You, you give the impression, when you give, you give the impression that a permit required. And if you've got along for 50 years with then you give the impression that one isn't required.
What's your suggestion, Bill? If we don't put it in, then all the trails that are currently, or many of the trails currently in use are out of compliance and should be removed.
Well, I don't like the.
Yeah, any trails in, in much of, of Bristol, which I don't think most people would want.
Right. What, what I am not liking and even not accepting, but I'm just one person, is the premise that if you don't prohibit something, that it's illegal. I think that's ridiculous. We'd have to have a zoning book that'd be several thousand pages long and we'd still miss some things.
So is the bottom line here a liability issue that you're inferring here?
That's, that, that's actually, Bill, an important question, but it's different than the one I'm raising tonight. They, the liability was the one through which we've reached a compromise in state law and state regulations. And we left untouched this idea of requiring a permit. And really, that's the way we should be looking at it, now requiring a permit for a trail. Cause that's what you're saying, if you're saying they're out of compliance.
Right, so currently, in those four zones only, you weren't allowed to have any outdoor recreation as defined. The rest of the zones, you could do it. Nothing changed. Honestly, Hogback Mountain didn't change with any of this. Um, it's still, that would, if you wanted to do a hiking trail back behind Hogback, if it can get little use, you would have to go to the ZBA today. Yeah, I'd be in the future. So anytime somebody wants to put in a, a hiking trail, now, it's very clear that it's a hiking trail and not a log road. It's not an access point. It is a hiking trail, and its use as a hiking trail would require a hearing. The hearing and the application process would require landowner authorization, because we permit based on parcel, and the parcel owner would have to give permission for that use to occur. So. So if somebody wanted to run a, a trail across Four Hills Fire, Fields out behind DVT, Four Hill Farms to do it, I couldn't just send in a permit. The landowner has, would have to sign off and/or be involved in the process if there was a hearing. Clear things up a little bit, Bill?
Helps. The way, over the years, some of those agreements, it's a mutual agreement, but we have a, usually have a set of conditions on which both parties agree. Conditions are violated, which has happened, I could give you some examples with the Appalachian Trail, the Green Mountain Trail. The long trail, I should say. Where if those conditions were violated, then they, then the right to use the trail was extinguished. Oh, as I'm listening.
So, Phil, we're, we're actually talking two different things here. The, the right to, to access the property is a legal issue. The right to create a hiking trail is a zoning issue. So if I, if I give you permission to put a hiking trail across my property, and in ten years you and I have a fallout, and I decide to put up a barrier at the end of that road, at the end of that trail and say you can't use it anymore, you're trespassing at that point. So you, you and I could set up conditions that I would be legally bound to follow. From a town standpoint, it's just, is it okay to have a trail in this area? Not whether or not it, the, the legal, I, I think you're getting into the weeds of some of the legal ramifications there. And I'm well aware of, of your concern and why you have them. I, I've seen A. Johnson's properties abused and abused over the years. So I fully understand your, your concern. But I, I think we're comparing apples to oranges at the moment. One is, would it be okay for somebody to build a hiking trail? The other is, is it okay for somebody to actually walk on that trail? Those are two different, two different issues, Bill.
The, the bridge between them is what you have a permit. The way I think, I think we accomplish both goals is to have in the permit that if the group of individuals who are creating the trail lose their permission, then they, then the permit also is lost. By mutual agreement, and they would be memorialized in that, in the hearing.
The nice part is, as a landowner, if I was, if I was a landowner and, and Rob had a trail across my property that I gave permission to use, and he was abusing it, he was driving his four-wheel across it when I didn't want him to, I could have, I could go in and pull, I could have that permit revoked as the landowner, I could ask for that permit to be revoked on that take it back to whatever use I wanted, and then he couldn't use it as a trail, he would have to go through the process to get it approved, and I would have to be involved in that.
And technically, wouldn't that permit, wouldn't you have had to apply for that permit in the first place? If, if it was your property? So you would have had to apply for it in the first place, and then you change it?
I, I'm working very
I mean, I don't know how that trail, the trail network works, but
That's, that's one way, but I think for those of us who've made our land available for recreation purposes, including hunting and fishing, but also hiking and snowmobiles and ATVs, we the trail's already there. And it's being used regularly by many, many people, hundreds of people, thousands of people. And so we've always had a very carefully defined, or I probably should say undefined, purposefully undefined relationship, where we, we keep the land open, but we never, we never surrender our right to use the land in a lawful manner. And what, and experience to which Chris is referring, that we've had, not in Bristol, but in other parts of the state, is people will use our logging trail for their own trail purposes. Often hiking, but all, all kinds of trail use. Trailers are pretty good, all checking every year for permission. But hiking, after a period of time, we haven't been on the property in a while, we go back to use our, we go back to use our property, and they say, you're, you're logging on our trail. And their trail was our logging road. That's not, that's not right.
Now, and, and that becomes, again, Bill, that, that then turns into, as, as I look at it, as a property legal issue, of somebody utilizing your property in an illegal manner. They're trespassing. I mean, I, that exact scenario, Bill, I kid you not, in Moncton, somebody just bought a parcel of land, and the neighbor just came to me and said, I heard they might log it again. I hike up there, I don't want them cutting the trees, I'm like, then you should have bought the, the hundred acres, I don't know what to tell you.
Well, so you can see why this is a very sensitive issue for and particularly. One last dilemma to consider.
Yeah, I
When?
I think, well, I'm
In, in this last case, and this, this applies to much of what's being contemplated for the trail network here in Bristol. It is on old logging roads. But it's not that you're, you're establishing a new trail than one that already exists. And furthermore, it has multiple purposes. You can't really say that it's just for hiking. Because more often than not, it's, it's not. And we don't mind if people use our logging roads to hike, perfectly happy. But find us when they say, we can't use our logging roads. So, some of the issues
Well, that, but you can make
Interesting issues, but this just establishes the ability to do outdoor recreation in some areas of the village, doesn't give anyone a right to claim use of it in a specific way.
Then they don't need a permit. If that's true, they don't need a permit.
And the only reason why they need a permit is because we define hiking trails in outdoor recreation. The other option is eliminate your outdoor recreation as site plan for those four areas, and eliminate hiking trail from your outdoor recreation definition. That would eliminate possibly Bill's concern. Or honestly
Not hiking trails as
Yeah, I mean
Audio is I'm having trouble hearing you, are you having
Yeah, I'm having some network issues.
One is for, yeah.
So, Bill, let, let me ask you a question. So you get a permit
Yes.
For a logging road?
No, that's exempt under state
There you go, okay, that, that, that was the point I wanted to make. So the logging road, but somebody wants to do, make it a hiking trail.
Well, they want to hike on the logging road.
They want to hack on the, on the So is, is it a problem in that the hiking trail has been used for ten years, there's been no logging, then somebody wants to log it again? What, what problem does that actually create? Other than ill will for some parties?
Well, the margins are so thin in our business.
I know that.
Only gotten worse with the effects of the virus. There you end up having to hire lawyers, you have plates, you have the time spent in negotiation, trying to smooth over hurt feelings. It can men, end up causing costing at a minimum several thousand dollars, and sometimes much more, plus a lot of, a lot of what you mentioned, but that, that's quite significant. We, we like to think we have a pretty good reputation with the hunters and hikers and the snowmobilers of Vermont. And we've taken many decades to cultivate that relationship. We don't like setting the stage for circumstances that would damage that relationship. And that's, that's what happens when you, you create this conflict. And so
Okay. Oh.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna be a, I hate cutting people off.
You, you can do it.
But I, I
We've probably beaten this dead horse too many, too many times.
I'm do it. And see if we can figure out how we can move forward on this. I understand the issue, but we, it's, how can we make this work? I think there's a couple of solutions where we had, you, so you don't agree with the permit at all. Even the way I see a site plan permit is that you can have conditions on there. That may not solve future problems, but it is helpful. So it being a site plan, you can have conditions to the permit. It's not just allowed, permitted. And the other thing is to take, suggestion that Chris made, to take out trails from outdoor recreation. Now, then you just get easements, it's not, doesn't, doesn't have a use.
So the hiking and riding trails are listed under permitted uses? In with hunting and everything else?
They are
So they're, they're listed is recreation outdoor, and its definition is a recreational use conducted primarily in the open or in partially enclosed or screened facilities. Example, athletic fields, sports courts, tracks, trails, et cetera, excludes shootings and motorized sports.
Yeah, and they're also listed under Section 806, permitted uses, recreation uses, and that also includes archery and shooting ranges, hunting and fishing areas, and everything else, so if, just, if we make any changes, it's also, they're also listed in that section.
Okay, well, I'll think about it, see if I can come up with a premise that we can live with.
Tonight?
Not tonight.
What?
Not tonight.
Uh-oh.
I pretty well shot my wad tonight, most everybody agree with me, especially Bill over there, and Jeff.
I wouldn't say that at all, no.
Okay.
No.
Well, I think, you know, the, I think what is happening with the Bristol Trail Network is a great thing, it, but it is different from the type of it is different, and it is not different from the type of trails we're talking about. And, and it it's, there's a lot of issues, and I, I, I see the, the problems.
I, I would just like to ask one question, what, what, the way things stand now, what, what are the, the bad things that happen that are really significant? That are not just irritants, but really, really significant?
I, I don't know if we can really get into that, I don't particularly know, this, this is, you know, the history of what's happened on Bill's properties, what he's referring to.
Well, Bill would know, that is really the question to Bill.
I tell you what happens, the, the hikers go get the Sierra Club to hire a lawyer for them.
Yeah. And wait, we can afford to fight the Sierra
Saying you can have a trail doesn't allow someone to do any of these things, that's totally different.
Only if it's a, if it requires a permit. It sounds like you're coming around to my point of view, that you shouldn't require, you, that if something is not mentioned allowed, not prohibited.
You can hire a lawyer and stir the dirt wherever you want, and it still costs the other person money to defend it.
Yeah.
Well, then they get back to the idea of a permit. That, that's very restrictive, very clear, it's dated.
They never, they never are, we, we've had better luck negotiating with neighbors and clubs and individuals and groups of individuals, one-on-one, informally, without getting lawyers involved and without permit processes. We've had
So why do we leave it at that?
Well, that was my initial feeling. But we have to change
The way our, if it is not permitted in our use, it is not allowed.
Well, if we have a list of allowed usage in five areas, one says outdoor recreation is allowed, and the others don't have outdoor recreation listed, then logically, outdoor recreation is not allowed in those areas.
Right.
And Chris's suggestion, you can remove outdoor recreation entirely, would deal with that. The question is, is that a useful thing to do? From a zoning perspective?
Or just take out
Or take out hiking from outdoor recreation?
I thought that's what he
That means other outdoor recreation is still not allowed?
Anyway, you can really need any infrastructure to hike most of the time, in my mind, but that's okay, we're gonna need to go back to that, but is there any I think it was in RA2, the, the size of accessory buildings. And that was a recommendation, that we were gonna make those lar, larger maximum size, because the, it was too small for someone who wanted to put a greenhouse, a greenhouse, say, or even a horse barn. I can't hear you. So, does anybody have any problems with that? That got changed.
Could you just give us a page number?
I don't know where it is, so is it RA? So it's in Section 2, then?
It looks like page is twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven, because we bumped it up in RA5 as well.
Okay.
From over a thousand to two thousand square feet.
Yep, I got it. Yep.
Yeah, two thousand, okay. I think that is a smart move personally, if anyone have any other issues, I mean, because it it seems like logical.
So pen, page twenty-nine, permitted uses, site plan review, outdoor recreation. What are we gonna do with that?
Well, that's I mean, we don't have to have a consensus, we can just decide to accept it or not, and, or change it. So if someone wants to make a motion, I, I mean, getting back to the schedule and timeline, I mean, it, that's an issue that we're, that we're stuck on. Are there any other issues that we're stuck on right now?
I have none.
So, Bill, just, as, as a compromise for now, because one of the, one of the discussions we had is, we have to go through after this passes, the plan passes in March, the, the, going through the zoning regs from top to bottom again, sort of, charge. At that point in time, that may be when we address the overall trail usage at a bigger issue. It may be get into defining outdoor common, commonly used private property or something. And we could define it at that point in time. Would you be amenable to that?
Could I, could we carve out this item and let me think about it? And then I'll come back with a proposal. I, I don't, I'm seeing unintended consequences all the way through here. And I'm trying to figure out a way where work for the people and work for the landowner both. In case any of you were wondering, we're working with the Trail Network all the time. And not, we work quietly, that's the way we usually do. But we respect their goals, but we, as them to respect our landowner rights. All trail groups are willing to do so. Almost everyone in Vermont with very few exceptions. And even then, it's only exception for a period of time, they usually come back around. So let me, yeah, go ahead.
I've got a question here. I, I agree with your point of view. And I think there's, when it comes down to anything, it's, it's money. And that can be very expensive if you're having to defend on some of that. From a practical sense, I think Katie's kind of worried about timeline here. How soon do you think you could come up with some kind of wording that would be acceptable to you? And we could keep this thing on track?
I would keep it on track tonight as, as to what you planned. With the exception of one item, and I'll see if I can come up with something for our next meeting. And then either way, change it or we don't. But everything, the train is still moving forward.
Does that work, Katie?
Well, let me see, so ideally, we need to, well, more than ideally. We need to make a motion to move this to a public hearing. Now, we can make, if we approve, if we agree to that, make a motion tonight and agree to that, we still have some time, we're moving as a draft and we could still. Let me just see, it, it's all about the warning and it's even longer now for warnings because you can only warn, and we only have a paper one day a week, et cetera. So the sort of latest public hearing the planning commission can have is the fourth of August. And our next meeting would be the 21st. We would already have to have warned that meeting, but we could actually approve that because it's, it's two weeks ahead. That actually would work, wouldn't it, Chris? So we, if you, if we all agree to something and we could just have, make that, you know, propose that and discuss it and agree to that at that meeting, then we, that would be 15 days ahead of the public hearing. And then you can't, then we couldn't make any more substantial changes. So that would be a substantial change. So I think we could do that, but I would have, we would have to already have warned our hearing. And so as long as we don't make any substantial changes any later than 15 days before that public hearing on the fourth, and the 21st is 15 days. So we could leave it as is without that change, or not sure how we should. So I don't know, how do people feel about that?
Let me try to make.
Or we could. Or we could have yet a third meeting this month.
Yeah, you, you know how to get me on that one.
Yeah.
So let me try.
Supposed to be a short.
So Bill, could you, could you email us what you think is acceptable, say sometime within the next five days? Is that a possibility?
It's a remote possibility.
How about six days?
Well, well.
Well, we'd like you to be in agreement because it's an important issue to you. I mean, we could go ahead and vote and, but we're not gonna do that. I want to hear.
Well, Bill, you just made me remember that God created the earth in six days, so I could probably get this done in six days.
Well, you being a God-fearing man, I'm sure you can pull it off.
Well, let me try to make it a lot simpler here tonight. Let's, let's go ahead with, you said, you, you designed it as site plan review, right? Which conditions? Well, that's another question I have. When we create subdivisions, the planning commission or the, or the, what's the other one now?
Design, well, design review board. No, 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 I'm sorry, development review board.
Okay, so who?
Development.
Who's responsible for site plan review?
All, all, it would all be the development review board. But that doesn't mean that, I mean, as part of this change, if someone wants to go on that board, you can kind, we can kind of switch it up. Everyone doesn't have to stand the planning commission. Do you see what I'm saying? But all, all reviews of projects will go to the DRB. Development, I always say design, I'm sorry, development review board. The other thing is to think about making it conditional. I don't know if that, because that is, it's more expensive and time-consuming, but it's.
I think, let's just leave it, and conditional is reviewed by the plank.
Planning commission will no longer review.
Anything.
Any, anything. We'll just do this, talk about, talk about stuff.
Make plans for other people's property and not have to judge them on it.
Exactly. So maybe another board.
Right.
There is something to be said for having the people who has, how they affect the people to whom the rules apply. But we've already crossed that bridge, so it sounds like I'm losing on Anglo-Saxon law tonight on two counts. Let's stick with the site plan review. I think that creates problems, which I operated tonight and I'm kind of thinking out loud with you. Brainstorming. It does create possibly an opportunity where the, would have a chance to tell the other side of the story and perhaps build in some conditions that would.
Conditions are, yeah, conditions are where you can clarify things, I think.
And, and as, as I think it was you, Katie, who suggested, I feel like perhaps even of necessity, the landowner has to make the application.
Right. Well, that's, yeah, that's how it would work.
So I think that's sailed them up protection right there.
Because you can always change, you can amend your permit and you're not required.
Okay.
Well, you can change it.
So in this exercise and studying, you brought me around.
All right.
Okay, site plan review.
So we don't have to wait six days?
No, no, not even.
All right.
On hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to move this.
Thank you, Rob. Did you, did you actually make that motion?
Yeah, I just don't know how to finish wording it.
Okay.
I would, Bob, my suggestion would be make a motion to accept the document as presented or as modified this evening.
I make a motion to accept the UDR document as amended this evening.
A second.
Any more discussion, dare I ask? No?
So, so can we put a date stamp or something on it so it's got a place in history?
Meet tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I've got this memo that says. But what did you say?
I forgot. What did you did? Okay. Okay.
Say goodnight.
Good.
Not mic here, Bill.
Oh, 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 oh. No, we're not gonna turn it off. Okay.
Okay.
She's, she would like to be part of the meeting.
Well, we could use her. I'm the only female here, I could use some more.
It is public.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, we should get a date on this. We can, would.
We didn't vote yet.
Did we reference the, the memo that was sent out?
I think memo is a separate issue. I think we should put a date on this document and then approve the memo with another date.
Okay.
So Jeff, Jeff brought up the point that we gotta vote on this.
Well, we do, but we have to make the amendment and then, then we vote on the amendment. No, is that not right, Chris?
Don't amend it. I mean, Kevin's is, is a request.
Not amendment, motion, I'm sorry, motion. We make the.
What, what we've done in the past is on the, when we print, on the title page of this, we say approved by the planning commission on July 7th, 2020. Approved by the SLAC board on November 2020. Approved by the voters, November of 2020.
And that is actually on the front page of the unified development regs. It, it's on the front page.
It's on the cover usually.
Right. So, okay. Can we do the mo?
You're frozen, Katie.
Can you make that, did we get the? I, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing, that's why I keep asking the same question over. It's, it's very, it's very broken, except for the, the little one.
You have a motion on the table. Now you just need to ask, if there's no more discussion, go to vote.
Right, I need to see the motion or hear it again. Can you, I didn't really hear it, I just want to make sure.
Motion is to accept, accept the document as modified on July 7th, 2020 by the planning commission. If there's any questions, now is the time.
Should we?
Hearing no questions, can we now vote on this? Those in favor of approving. Are we doing this or what? Jesus, my man, the man, the boat, the marie, get us.
Technical glitches.
We're all breaking up, that's the problem. Did we get most of what I said or no?
Yes.
Okay, are there any questions about this motion?
No.
Can we vote on this motion?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. The motion carries, thank you.
Okay, you can leave the next meeting, I'd be glad to give you that.
No, 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 that ain't happening.
No? Okay, great.
So the 21st, 21st is the next meeting?
We got it.
21st is the next meeting. Yes, okay, thank you.
So do we, do we need to vote on the memo as well?
It's not going anywhere.
Yes, it is, by statute, it is required to file a memo that summarizes what is in, what the changes are. So, um, it, I mean, we haven't changed anything in the document that would affect this memo as far, that I can see. Does anyone have any problems with the memo?
Was that, you wrote it on July 2nd?
Excuse me?
Was that written on July 2nd?
No, he wrote it today.
Seven.
He wrote today.
Seven, okay, thank you.
I have a question about it. Chris, you could probably answer this. My memory is we decided, one of the reasons we decided to include subdivision regulations was because other towns have them already. Is that correct? So I thought it would be useful to mention that in the memo, that we are not an outlier here. In that first section, inclusion of subdivision regulations, that first subpara, some wording that would mention that this is the norm in the region.
We're one of very few towns that do not.
Do not have them.
But I think the impetus to put in those regulations was to cut the amount of red tape that contractors had to go through with Act 250, blah, blah, blah. So that was really the impetus for including that. So I don't think we need to put that in, that's my own feeling.
The.
There's been a lot of, lot of.
I could say the purpose is to cut red tape.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion for this as well? Or we can? Okay.
Go ahead, Katie.
Well, I actually am still the chair, so I don't make the motions. So that's how we've been operating.
Kevin, do us the favor, will you please make a motion? Any, any motion?
I move to accept the letter dated July 7th explaining the changes to the unified development regulations.
Is there any discussion?
Second.
Ooh, there's a.
Is there a second? Yes, okay, second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
You can't vote, Chris.
Well, he can.
Pointing at everyone who was saying yes, I was happy.
We're not approving the typos, I assume. The typos will be cleaned up.
Typos in the memo?
Yeah.
Yeah, type will be, and, and feel free to share, you know.
Yeah, I'll send them to you.
Let me know those are. Okay, so I will go ahead and, or hey, Chris, you. or hey, Chris, you want to do a notice? Do you want to or at least send me a sample and I'll write it up for if you can find a legal notice for zoning or the last zoning. See what you have in the files, because I don't have access to that. What?
When do you need it by?
I need to get ASAP. So if you could do it tomorrow, send me what, you know, and then I'll just I'll craft it. Can't do?
I definitely cannot do it tomorrow. I've got all day training tomorrow. I could do it Friday.
Okay, well, Sharon might be able to find something in the files, would she? Be able to find a legal? Don't know.
I wouldn't dare speak for her.
Okay.
Very wise, Chris.
I'll see what I can do. But if you have, you know, have anything that you can send me, that'd be great. Because I need to, well, actually, I probably it probably won't go in the paper until next week, Monday. So if you could give it to me Friday, that'd be great. Then I could get it to them. All right. So I'll communicate with them.
Send me a reminder, please.
Yeah, yeah, I will. Okay. Who's gonna make the next motion?
I make a motion that we end this meeting right away, pronto. Bill wants to continue it.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, so now we this is great. Thank you, everybody. And and now we're gonna get the plan done. Okay?
Have a good week, everybody.
You too. When? When is the next?
July twenty-one.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, twenty-one is twenty-first.
Thank you.
Two weeks.
July twenty-first.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Arrivederci. Buonanotte.
Thank you, everybody.